Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Fairfield Board of Education Special Meeting, our Town Hall. This evening, call to order of the meeting is present with us this evening is Mrs. Rotelli, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Guernsey, Mrs. Jacobson, Mrs. Maxon Cenelli, Mr. Peterson, Mrs. Kelly. And Mr. Asa asked me to relay his apologies for not being able to be with us here this evening. He's watching from home just due to circumstances beyond his controls, but he sends his regards to everyone. And I would just like to welcome our moderator for this evening. So grateful for you to be here. Marcy Spoiler is serving as our moderator this evening. So, Mr. Peterson, would you like to lead us in the pledge? Since you're already standing. Discussion of Facilities, Finances, and Programs. So this is our Town Hall. For those in the audience who would like to speak, it's a more casual opportunity for people to come up and engage in dialogue and ask questions with the board. And we will hand it over with that to our moderator. Go ahead.
It looks like there's a sign-up list up front. I'm not sure if anyone's signed up on it, but if not, you can just feel free to go up. I want you just to state your name, your address. Everyone gets 10 minutes, and then the board can respond to your questions.
So the 10 minutes is for the Q and A. So normally, some member of the public will ask a question, it may be one, two, three minutes. Then the discussion will go on after 10 minutes, then maybe kind of take the pulse, see if we want to continue it, or, you know, not.
Thank you. Who wants to be brave to go first?
Katie Flynn, 204 Grandview Road. As the timeline for redistricting continues to move forward, aside from the two obvious main objectives, meaning the racial imbalance statute and the utilization of our school facilities, can you speak to your priorities in the redistricting planning process? Community engagement, grandfathering, academic outcomes, SEL support, increased staff needs, all our examples? And any roadblocks or concerns that you see in ensuring these priorities are balanced with the redistricting objectives and the implementation over the next year? With four to five weeks between the proposed voting date and the budget being in its movement, do you feel there is sufficient planning time in place?
Thank you, Mrs. Flynn. Any one of the board members want to speak first?
I'll just kind of riff on that, I guess. Thank you for your question. Thank you for coming tonight. Clearly, there are a lot of priorities. Like, this is a process that I have envisioned for years as being kind of a time where we could address a lot of priorities at once. And the compressed timeframe has made that far more challenging. I think we are going to have to talk about grandfathering. That's something that has come up in discussion here, but not really been debated in any depth, but has been a factor in past redistricting efforts. And certainly, this is something that I think that the public is interested in. I'm mostly interested, honestly, in the robustness of the process. I am interested in coming out with a solution that will stand the test of time. Instead of trying to hit a lot of different targets, I want something that we can present to the public with some reasonable confidence that this is going to stand for the foreseeable future. It's been 20 years since we've done this process, at least as a top-to-bottom redistricting. It's been too long, in my opinion, but if we can find some way to get a 10- or 15-year timeframe out of whatever we do, that's a thing that I'm very interested in because I think that, you know, having that, I don't want to call it certainty or surety, but, you know, that level of confidence from the public that we're not going to be doing this every three to five years, and we're not going to be coming after what we're doing now with a pocket redistricting in short order, I think that's very important to people. So that's a thing that I've been thinking about for this entire process. I don't want to do this. I want it done to whatever degree that's possible.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Any other members of the board? Ms. Guernsey?
Thanks so much for your question. I am very concerned about the timeline. I've expressed this previously. And I'm concerned about having conversations over the summer where, when our parents and students are away from school and away from their PTA communities. I am concerned about grandfathering, and I would not support a proposal that did not include that, or a plan that wouldn't include that. I'm concerned about SEL. We haven't had a chance to really talk about any of that, so, you know, just trying to think about, this is pretty ambitious, and I don't really see how we can do it well in this compressed timeline. I'm hopeful, because that's our charge, but I don't see it.
Mr. Peterson, you had a follow-up to that?
Yeah, I want to add something very quickly. The point about the summer and public disengagement, we, I'm going to go out on a limb and say, we want the public to be deeply engaged in the process and well-informed. I got a text just today from somebody who I would consider, you know, a very online, very connected person, who asked what the timeline was. And, you know, she admittedly doesn't have kids in the system anymore, but she's on Facebook all the time, so she didn't get the mass email that parents got. I mean, I would encourage administration and all of us to talk this up throughout the process and try to make sure that people know that in this time when a lot of people are away and a lot of people are not plugged in, that they need to be more engaged, because I certainly don't want anything to be a surprise or any accusation that we're doing something in the dark of night. So everyone, get out there, tell your friends.
Mrs. Maxon Cenelli?
Coming off of Mrs. Guernsey's comment, you know, and to Mr. Peterson's point about grandfathering, we very deliberately didn't talk about that more before because the place for it wasn't before. We are coming up on the time when it is the appropriate moment to have that debate on grandfathering. And I think every, I can't imagine anyone isn't interested in considering that, and, you know, what would it look like, and how would it impact our plans, and what are the budget implications of it? So I definitely think that'll happen, but it was appropriate that it didn't happen until now. Regarding the timeline, which I agree feels ambitious, but I'm not willing to say it's an impossible timeline or a too hasty timeline, none of us can know that because we have no idea what the plans are that we're about to see. We have, I just want to be really clear with the public. There is no back channel where the nine of us know what's about to come next Tuesday that the public does not know. We know nothing about what the consultant is about to bring to us as a body of nine. We're going to find out next Tuesday when the public does. Again, tough night for it, but circumstances, we didn't have a lot of choice in that. But it's not until we see what they come forward, till we see the solutions to the priorities, that we can have a sense of just how controversial might this be, how well-founded, how well can we defend, how thoughtful is it? So I think it is too hasty to say it's too hasty. After next Tuesday, that's a different matter. And, you know, but we do have a plan that we approved to the state, but, again, I'm more interested in the point Mr. Peterson said, which is, we are tackling, it has been, unfortunately, one of the reasons for the disengagement of parents is, this is like the boy who cried wolf. We keep talking about it, why should they engage? We never do anything about it. And that, of course, is unfortunate, because I believe we are about to embark on doing something. And, you know, I can only, again, echo Mr. Peterson's point of putting this out there as much as possible. This is real. We are getting real, at least philosophical, positions. I'm not sure what exactly we're getting next Tuesday. You know, I don't know that we're getting street names. I don't know what we are getting. But we are definitely getting something that is going to move the conversation forward, and we're going to have to start taking positions on things. And obviously, an unfortunate time, because parents aren't as engaged. And we're going to have to see what we can do about that as a board. I am glad you, you know, raised the SEL concern. I think that our PTAs are going to be absolutely vital in that process of how do we support transition for our various students? The schools will obviously need to come up with plans, and that's going to have to be a very explicit focus to make this as smooth as possible for whichever students are impacted. I did forget, I started to take notes, unfortunately, on your question, Katie. Unfortunately, I started way too late, so a lot of your points I lost track of, because I wasn't expecting quite a meaty, a question as meaty as yours. So I'd be curious if there's something you raised that you haven't heard anyone address yet that someone can get to.
I think, like I said, the main concern is, you know, I think we heard, you know, in years past, a lot of runway for this process, a lot of time to look at the budget implications, but in this timeframe, if, it's just getting very compacted, and like you said, I think there, I've been using the Chicken Little redistricting in my PTAs to say to people, it's been a long time, but please stay engaged and informed and a part of the process. So I think the question is aimed at kind of just eliciting that, that we're seeing, or I am seeing, and I'm speaking as a member of the public, not as a PTA leader, but we are definitely seeing a hesitation to get involved in the process because of how long this has been going on in the community.
Thank you. Does anyone else have a comment? Mrs. Vitale?
Thank you for the question. As a past PTA president and someone who got involved years ago when, sitting in an elementary school gym, saying this conversation, at that point, it was the middle school redistricting, it's going to be happening over the summer, does anybody, will anybody volunteer to go to the meetings just to report back? So any PTA leaders that are listening, I understand that parents have plans, but I think it's very important that at least one person is keeping a close eye on what's going on over the summer. I am concerned about the timeline. I was concerned when we first passed it and told the state board as much that I thought that it was aggressive. And at that point, this board was going to get the initial first round from SLAM on May 9th, that meeting. I remember, because it was my birthday, and I was like, wow, what a fun way to spend your birthday, getting a SLAM presentation. So we already lost a month, which I think is important for us to recognize. The October 23rd date, when we passed the plan, I thought that we, I think we all thought it was somewhat aggressive, but very much cognizant of the potential budget implications, especially as we talk about things like grandfathering. And that is going to come, if history is any guide, with a significant cost. And unfortunately, you know, it's, aside from the financial challenges with that, we don't know how easy it will even be to operationalize. We've had challenges with just getting buses to run our typical routes. In fact, this year, I think we cut it down to. So I think that's something to be aware of, that it's nuanced, it's multifaceted, and we want to give the superintendent and staff a little bit of lead time in terms of planning for the budget for all the things that you mentioned, in terms of making sure, especially if we're going to be moving students that have high needs out of one elementary school, that the school that they go to is properly supported. And that's going to take time, and we're going to be relying on administration to guide us on that, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Flynn. That's been about 11 minutes. I know it's multiple topics. Can we continue?
Yeah, I'm just going to follow up with one last comment, piggybacking off of Mrs. Vitale. There will be a fiscal analysis done for any scenarios that the board wants to see carried forward prior to the budget process built into this timeline. So certainly, understand that our administration is going to need time to do that fiscal analysis by any of the scenarios that we want to see. And I'm sure other town bodies will also be interested in hoping that they come along with us on this journey as well.
I know this question had multiple questions within it, so if everyone on the board is okay with continuing, we're at 12 minutes, but I know Ms. Gerber has a question and others do. So if everyone's okay, Ms. Gerber?
Yeah, it won't be long, because a lot of people have already said what I was planning on saying. I think the answers you're getting tonight may be very different if you came a week from now and asked the question, or a week from tomorrow night. So there's just a lot of unknowns, you know, and I'm just coming at it from the memory of the last, you know, major redistricting, which happened when my kids were very early on in this system. The plans went through so many different permutations, and I'm not saying that will happen this time, but it is hard not to imagine that there won't be some changes. I will be shocked. I mean, if we want to keep the timeline, it would be nice if there's a plan that everyone really likes, and we can start moving forward and looking at the budget, you know, ramifications and everything. But I'm thinking that's probably not going to happen, in which case, then, just how is that going to work in terms of keeping to that timeline, especially since we are already a month late? Not due to anything that we did, but that does concern me.
Any of the other board members who haven't spoken yet want to speak? Ms. Kelly?
Just real quick, I don't want to downplay anybody's concern, because they're all legitimate, and they're, I share the same concerns, but I also sometimes feel like the anxiety we have about timeline and can we get it done, can we get it done, I feel like would be the same, we'd be having the same conversation if we said, we have two years to figure it out. We have three years to figure it out. There would still be anxiety over, is that enough time to do it? Do we have enough money? How are we going to pay for it? So is the condensed timeline ideal? No. But I don't think there's any number that we could throw out there timeline-wise where people would be like, I am very comfortable with that, and we are going to be spot-on ready, so.
Ms. Rotelli?
Sure. I'm going to echo what Ms. Kelly says. I think a lot of this depends on what we hear next week. We share all the same concerns. I know all of us will be interested in grandfathering and the budget implications, and obviously I do think, though, that we've known the timeline. I have seen this board. This has been the most interesting three years. We've faced a lot of challenges coming in, you know, when I started working on redistricting, and then being completely shut down and going through COVID, and then going through a superintendent search. And we've, I remember last summer, feeling a tremendous amount of pressure with our schedules to make meetings, and I know that this board can do it. I know that we'll have the conversations, much like what Mr. Peterson said. I also believe that people should stay engaged and connected. And as a parent who's been through the redistricting discussions before, not as a board member, I was very much aware of what was going on and tuned in, and I'm hopeful that a lot of our parents are paying attention, and they can write us and come to our meetings and voice their concerns. So I don't want anyone to think that they can't do those things. Our emails are always open. So I think that, I really hope we can stick to this timeline and make the decision, because this is something that we committed to a long time ago, trying to solve these problems. And we do have the October vote, which I'm hoping can be done, because I would hate to sort of pass the buck on to the next board, which will look different than this current board, and it is a lot of work. And I do think that what Ms. Kelly said is correct. You're going to have the same concerns about timeline and anxiety in a year from now, or two years from now, and there's going to be more problems that come up. And I don't think there's ever going to be a perfect solution. I think we're just going to have to do the best with the information that we have and try to make the best decisions for all of the kids in Fairfield.
Thank you. Any last comments? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Flynn.
Thank you all.
The next person can come on up from the public?
I'm just here as I-
Could just state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Jeri Ann Mitchell. I'm an employee at the Early Childhood Center. I remember being here a couple of years ago in front of the majority of you and some new faces, when we were pleading for you to keep ECC as one site, and we were so excited when you were all on our side, and then devastated when spacing prohibited that from happening. Our concerns still stand. We feel the one-site affords us much more flexibility, and there's a couple of things that have happened recently that may not have been initially outlined. Our concern becomes if the bill, the HB 6880, passes the Senate and the kindergarten age changes, the number of kids being retained at ECC longer will provide a need for additional space. And I appreciate the comments about pocket redistricting. We don't want pocketed redistricting, and that's our biggest concern, if we were to be split, especially looking at, there were some concerns when we brought this up about least restrictive environment, 50%. You know, the new state form is tracking based on 50% non-disabled peers, and that's the ratio that they're currently using. So currently, we are not able to meet that. And again, that's been a significant concern, that there's not enough non-disabled peers as role models for our children, and with the efficacy of early intervention, that need to have those models for better outcomes going forward. And looking at, you know, this year, we did over 125 evaluations, which is pretty huge, and we're growing on a regular basis. And I think the issue this year with staffing provided an extra problem in some respects. Had we been in one building, some possibility for sharing and making up for when staff was absent would be easier to do versus two separate buildings and not being able to share staff when this happens. You know, and it's just really hard, because right now, the split between the two buildings is done by feeder patterns, and it's not equal. And if we were not able to have the one site that we are all dreaming and hoping and praying will happen, you know, like, where does that go as well? Because it has never been equitable, and I don't know that it ever will be. So we just really want to put it out there that we would really, really, really appreciate one-site consideration. But these are some additional factors that were not present in previous discussions. And I was just wondering if anyone had recognized these and thought about these, and, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Would any of the board members like to address Ms. Mitchell's questions? Mr. Peterson?
I'll just make some general comments. I appreciate your sticking to the one-site. We've been here before, we've been exactly here. I miss the tie-dye shirts, though. But I think a lot of us on this board have heard, have heard your arguments and brought them even without the additional points that you make, which the HB 6880 is an interesting, is an interesting wild card in that, I'm not sure where that's going to go. All that being said, and I know you understand this, I know you understand that we have a fundamental challenge with space. It would be awesome to make the ward site much larger. I've been in there, it's a beautiful site, it's, you know, it's purpose-built for your program. It's a difficult ask, and looking at where we have space elsewhere in the district, I mean, as you know, I asked for an option in our, in our redistricting plans. I'm very, I'm tender-hoxxed, trying to, wondering if that's going to be a plausible option. It's difficult that we don't have more space to build on it or to expand into. But I really just want to say that I think that we absolutely hear where you're coming from, and the consistency with which the staff has made this plea has not fallen on deaf ears.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Ms. Jacobson?
Hi, good evening. Thank you for coming out and reiterating your point of view and raising some new concerns. As Mr. Peterson stated, there will be a scenario that has as an option, because that's what the board gave them a charge to, as well as additional spaces for additional pre-K classrooms, not in one location. So as you know, we expanded the number of classrooms to build into our special, you know, programming spaces across the district. I think if the kindergarten age changes, it will be a one-year issue for you on both our ends, right? It would be a higher number on that end for you, a lower number for us possibly, and then the next year, it would be possibly the opposite, right? Because you're going to have a different timeframe. So we'll see if it passes. I don't know that it will. But again, we haven't received, I think next week, it'll be much better to understand. I do, given the history, and just being candid, and I haven't seen anything, I don't know anything, but just given the history of taking elementary schools offline, I do have some concerns about that going into that conversation. But again, I don't know, maybe they have this wonderful situation that looks magical, and it'll be consideration. But I do have concerns on taking out a neighborhood school, just unless it comes back. So, open to that discussion as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobson. Any other board members? Ms. Maxon Cenelli?
Yeah, I think what Mrs. Jacobson just captured is exactly what the difficulty is about this conversation. We will be listening to all of the voices, but all of the voices will be speaking to their specific concerns, and there's nothing wrong with that. I'm not judging that. But the moment one group is, gets something that it is interested in, that means somebody else didn't. And that's the difficult part of this. And it gets back to, you know, Mr. Peterson's point of, you know, we've got the priorities, we have two things we know we need to address, and then there's everything else. So again, if we come up with, unless, and I don't think they were charged with finding a new building, you know, we aren't, haven't been able to take, you know, for example, that extra property at Giant Steps, where we have Walter Fitzgerald in the one building right now. There's been no other building that we've talked about, so that would mean repurposing a neighborhood school. If we repurpose a neighborhood school, ECC staff thumbs up, that neighborhood school thumbs down. If we, so, and that's, that is the difficult part about this, is that we're hearing all of it, each group will only hear the argument that it is most concerned with. And that is the hard part about this, and that's why the more engaged people are, the better, so that they understand what's at play. And if all you do is make the play for your argument, understand that we are also hearing from a completely different voice. And I, still going back, though, is that I have loved the idea of a one-site. If it is possible, I do, because I think all of the points you raised, and some of those are very new points. That issue of the staffing was never as grave a problem as it was this past year. Now it is considerable, and it is directly impacting the education we can offer. And only that much more challenging at the ECC with those students there. You can't just tell them, go to the cafeteria, and here's your work to do. That would be, that would be a grave challenge and a grave mistake. And so, it is tough, and it just, again, I just keep coming back to, I'm very eager to see what we have next Tuesday. But I'm very grateful that you came here to, again, reiterate this point and to bring up these new points for consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Maxon Cenelli. Any other board members with comments? Mr. Peterson, again?
I'm sorry, I just want to make a quick point that I think needs to not be lost in this discussion, for the sake of the public, who I think is unfortunately poorly informed about what your program entails. These are Fairfield children that we have a legal obligation to educate. And, and I, so I just want to make sure for the, for the public, and we're going to say this again and again as we go through, talk about whatever scenarios we're talking about, we're not talking about, you know, kind of a, just a nursery school program that's, you know, that's just out there, that's expendable. This is, this is an obligation that we have, and an obligation that I think this administration, this board has taken very seriously in years past and will continue to do so. As we balance things, I want, I just want the public to understand that this is an obligation that we have.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mrs. Vitale?
Thank you again for your advocacy, and I won't repeat what my fellow board members say, but I would just ask, some of the things that you brought up that are new about the feeder pattern and concerns about staffing, I don't know if staff is going between the two sites. I thought originally, you know, one of the discussions of having the site at Straffield was that possibly staff could be shared. Maybe just a follow-up in writing to the board about some of these concerns, because regardless of where, you know, the program ends up and what it looks like in the years 2004 and, you know, beyond, maybe there's some things that we should be looking at for next year. So, but thank you for your advocacy and for all you do for our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Vitale. Any other board member comments? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Mitchell.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Another member from the public, if they'd like to come up? Another member from the public, if they'd like to come up? They'll, they'll adjourn if not, but. Great, don't forget to state your name and your address.
Good evening. I'm Kate Mackey at 10 Four Seasons Road. This is the first time I've been through a redistricting, so forgive me if this is sort of a basic question. I really have no idea truly what to expect throughout this process. But based on some comments that you're not really sure yourselves what you're going to see next Tuesday, whether it'll get down to like street-level maps or if it'll be more, I guess, just general in nature, I'm curious as to what your process is for the next few months. I know that there's going to be a meeting at Ward to hear from the public, then there's a July virtual meeting, and then August and September. So will you be going through at those meetings and kind of arguing, not arguing, but like talking like line-by-line, street-by-street? Or are there separate committee meetings that you'll be having yourselves that the public may or may not have access to? And then I guess as sort of a secondary question, I didn't realize that there was a possibility that this determines this October. So what are the ramifications for the district if we don't come to an agreement on the plans by October?
Thank you, Ms. Becky. Ms. Cannel, Ms. Maxine Cannelly?
First of all, thank you for the first point, and I'm so delighted that you're engaging on this. I want to be really explicit, and I'm sure everyone on the board would agree, nothing is going to be happening in a location, in a meeting, that the public does not have access to. Nothing. I suppose the only thing the public wouldn't have access to are the individual advocacy emails that we receive. That's not something that the public is seeing. But all of our conversations, and I think it's really important that we're deciding it as a body of nine, there's not a subcommittee that's taking this up or anything. So if you're engaged with what the full board is doing, you're going to be hearing live conversation, live decision-making, live votes. I, I don't know if we end up postponing that October 23rd decision and vote. I don't think any of us have any idea of knowing that. But ultimately, there will be a vote, so it's not a matter, this doesn't need to be a unanimous vote. It could be a five-four vote. We don't know. But there will be a vote, vote ultimately. So it's not a matter, again, if anyone could feel free to correct me, it's, there's not a matter of a decision won't be made. Maybe it'll be postponed for some reason, maybe somehow October 23rd doesn't happen. But there will be a vote, and there'll be a decision, and there'll be a path charted going forward. So I wanted to jump on the first part of your question. What was your second question again?
Well, I think it had to do with that very thing, that if, if there wasn't a decision, what are the ramifications for the district if you don't come to some sort of conclusion? But it seems like maybe that's not an option based on your response, perhaps.
That would, that would be my interpretation of it, yes. Now, again, when you talk about the street-by-street, that's where we don't know what is coming to us next Tuesday. Is it going to be that granular? Or is it more of a, okay, you've got to choose a scenario going forward of a close-a-school scenario, repurpose-a-school scenario, or whatever, or just not do either of those and just straight-by-streets? I don't, I don't know the level of the conversation we're going to be having because I'm not sure what we're going to see. So tune in.
Thank you, Ms. Maxine Cannelly. Other members? Ms. Jacobson?
Hi, good evening. Thank you for being here. I'm going to speak to your process piece a little bit. So obviously, you followed along enough to know that we were, last summer, that we passed an amendment to our racial imbalance plan, it was approved by the state. So you know, you're caught up to like today, right? All right. So as you know, next week, we're going to get our scenarios presentation. The board will have follow-up conversation. We've moved that meeting to Ward in order to accommodate if there ended up being a lot more people who wanted to come, wanted to make sure we would have the space at that meeting as we continue our conversations and asking questions and follow-up questions from the June 13th meeting. During the summer, you know, depending on how those conversations go and what the board decides, I mean, my own personal feeling is that I would love to have, give administration guidance for the summer in terms of starting to work on those fiscal notes. They're going to need time for that, especially if we're building in grandfathering, based on how many, many years it may be, or just whatever it is that the board wants to move forward with. I think that our administration, our transportation department, our special ed programs, et cetera, are going to need some time to cost out some of the changes in staff or, or transportation that we need. So my personal feeling is that I would like to have some guidance by the summertime to give them that time. Yep, we're going to have a July 25th virtual community conversation, just like this one. So no matter where anybody is in the world, they can come meet with us on that night if they would like to. There will be more in the fall as well. There is going to be plenty of opportunity to meet with the board, talk with the board, come to public meetings and give public comment in addition to the emails and whatnot that people can always send. So there has been a very deliberate, thoughtful, intentional approach to ensuring that if parents want time to talk with the board, it has been built into the process going forward. So that's the process piece. And I think Mrs. Maxine Cannelly talked about the ramifications piece. But if it's not voted on by October 30th, just from a technical standpoint, we would be out of compliance with our racial imbalance plan. So that's just a technical provision.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobson. Any other members of the board have comments? Seeing none? Thank you, Ms. Becky. Make sure you fill your name and address out on the. Great, thank you. If any other members of the public want to step up to ask questions? Going once? Going twice? Okay, I'll turn it back to Ms. Jacobson.
Thank you for coming and stepping in this evening. Much appreciated. I appreciate it. And thank you to those who came out this evening and took the time to be here there. And I know it's always hard at night to come out and be with us, so I appreciate you taking the time to come out. And I'll, I'll let the board, since we are pretty early, if there's anything, final comments anyone would like to say? No? Okay.
Just want to say, I'm just hoping the public agrees with it. We're about to end. So for the three people who didn't speak, if there's anything you want us to talk about, please come up. It doesn't have to be a well-formed question.
Doesn't have to be about redistricting either. It could be other things. Yeah. Okay. All right. Then with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn, please, from the board members. Mrs. Vitale, seconded by Mrs. Gerber, all in favor, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, and good evening.